Okay, folks. If everybody can find a seat, help look at that. The little comments meeting of the Bridgeston City Council September 28th, 2022 to order. You'd all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people of it, with all our heart, one nation, united in this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. The clerk will now call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Here.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Here.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Heim.
Here.
Councilmember Luke.
Here.
Councilmember Norr.
Here.
Councilmember Hood.
Here.
All right, we have all eight councilmembers. President Snipes, good to see everybody. Uh, this meeting in particular is kind of a special meeting for us because we had a lot of us who've gone all the last week, so we're extorting them. We'll move on to item D, the agenda approval.
Move for second.
Councilmember Heim, move for approval, seconded by councilmember Luke. Further comments, questions, suggestions, changes? Saying none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. We are down to the public comments portion of tonight's meeting, item D. We have one card, Nancy Lepia. Nancy? John, you're coming up too?
Nancy Lepia, John Lepia, and my other fellow on the card.
Right.
Well, 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 here I am again. Hopefully, at the end of this evening, I'll be seeing you in the conference room. Um, so I do apologize for that, but no, I have to say, I'm a bit frustrated, and I feel a lack of patience and comfort. So, um, I feel like I wasn't learning everything. Hopefully, Bridgette's learning, I'm learning, but the biggest point is, although I appreciate your respect, the layers of city government, and the stuff that has to go through, I have no patience for her. So, I'm happy to see you coming to an end. Um, you all should have gotten pictures and videos of stormwater in action. You would see for yourself what was to deal with for nineteen months. A lot of you seem to probably, with me and my cousins, marriage, with you several times, um, and call for yourself. Of course, you and I also ran into the contractors and contractors in my backyard. Oh, I'm not going to leave you, Nancy. No, no. They got the young contractor from him, and he's zero. Unfortunately, he berated that yard, the yard on the road inside completely wrong, and here's everything, mostly the meat, but also others. Within thirty days of the new residents moving in, they had huge deep rust in their backyard, so it totally got worse and worse. So, Bridgeston, um, that was a bank, unfortunately, that's for sure. Uh, several of you called me the morning of after we had the nine inches of rain at the end of July, to see how we were and how my basement was, and I had to keep it in perspective. We weren't being rescued from our home by the new, as we were seeing on the news. But mother nature is, you know why, and she needs this, and she needs this. Unfortunately, as a result of that storm, we did end up with black mold in the basement. So, we had to have that taken care of. I don't believe in waiting for somebody else to fix a problem if there's something I can do, I am going to do it. So, I now have thirty, thirty barrels of hay, all along the overgrown honey puddles that belong to the lady behind me, and that was an attempt to slow the water down. And you saw the velocity which the water flows. And every time it rains, I lock my window, or have to look out, and I have to go, oh, water there, I put another barrel of hay there. I have the equal amount of thirty sand beds around our home. Let's put this book in for a minute. I remember the heart of Bridgeston. Now, finally, the road around, and I have sand beds around my house. This guy is really playing havoc with everything. I'm extremely grateful I brought a neighbor from, who was also affected by this. If you raise your hand.
Hello.
I'm supposed to get another, I was supposed to get a resident of the Bridgette on the road, and he was supposed to be here this evening. In front of you, you had a spec report, Bridgette Missouri account, in front of you, I printed off here a letter from other, uh, Brooklyn residents. It's frustrating, I'm tired, I'm tired. Councilmember Zimmer. Bless your heart. You called me last, last week, uh, last year, with the enthusiastic reference to the fact that council has approved to put it in the budget for next year, maybe twenty twenty-two. Remember? Next year! So, all right, but, um, let me, let me, I'm just trying to, you know. So, I have huddled up, I don't have patience for that. But, let me say this real quick, I'm sure you're watching tonight, Dave. John and I were both raised in a middle-class, hard-working home. What we were taught is you strive, you purchase your own home, and when you do, you take care of it. I have everything, you just take care of it. Then hearing him as a police officer in the community of which we live, it was very important to us that we set the example. When our kids started writing, the first time our phone pulled up in front of our house with the radio, whoop-a-boo, and the car shaking, I was out the door to do an effort to open the house like that again. We take great pride, because that emotional side has really hit you hard. Fact or fact, you know the facts. How irresponsible to my emotions, and I'm sure it didn't always allow me to put the back foot forward, but what would you have done differently? Right? We all come to make sure we take care of our problems. So, I certainly appreciate the support for the second reading tonight, and I look forward to seeing what the vote is. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Anyone else that didn't turn in a card, Dave?
David West, thirty-eight, twenty-seven, heartbreak to take, and I'm very sympathetic to this hardship we've endured for the last nineteen months. Uh, I do want to say, same as I said before, the first option had been tried first, which was, we have to, bring the permanent, and see if it failed. That cost was around five, ten thousand pounds. If it failed, I was all for it, spending around four hundred thousand dollars. I never, ever spend Bridgeston residents' money. I would think, uh, radically, not what you especially deserve. We had to try a ten thousand dollar, five thousand dollar tuition first, and we're not doing it. We vote, this is not value, and that's what I swear.
You need to, you need to keep the collection comment to yourself on that one, Dave.
I would.
All right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but I have to correct, incorrect information.
Nancy, we can't get you to tit for tat on.
None of the worms have not been done.
Yeah, we can't do it. All right. Any further comments or questions? Saying none, we will move on to approval of the next September seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting. Motion made by councilmember Hood, seconded by councilmember Grimmer, to approve the September seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting. Further comments, questions, suggestions, changes, amendments? Saying none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? That motion carries. Do we have no appointments to presentation, resolution, no hearing? So, we are down to perfection of bill, and we are to bill sixty-three thirty-eight. Councilmember Grimmer.
All right, very well, thank you, Mayor. Uh, move for second reading of bill number sixty-three thirty-eight.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel for second reading of bill sixty-three thirty-eight. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Councilmember Grimmer.
Very well, thank you. An ordinance of the city council, city of Bridgeston, Missouri, application number twenty-two dash E D dash fourteen, establishing a special use permit for a quote, car wash, unquote, to be, to allow an automated car wash located at one oh eight two five and one oh eight oh nine St. Charles Rock Road. Move that bill number sixty-three thirty-eight become ordinance number?
Twenty-two dash thirty-four.
Twenty-two dash thirty-four.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel for bill sixty-three thirty-eight to become ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-four.
Move to table for consideration of a special use permit.
Is there a second to the table?
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel to table, bill sixty-three thirty-eight. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Councilmember Grimmer.
Move to move that the proposed use set forth, bill number sixty-three thirty-eight, be determined to promote the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the people of the city of Bridgeston in accordance with and in the accomplishment of the comprehensive zoning plan of the city, taking into consideration the effect of such building or use on traffic conditions, fire safety, the character of the neighborhood, and the general welfare of the community and utility.
Thank you.
All right, very well, thank you. And further, as a finding of fact and conclusion of law, I find that the proposed use will have no adverse effect on the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the people of Bridgeston with respect to traffic conditions, fire safety, the character of the neighborhood, and the general welfare of the community or public utility. My vote on this is aye.
Very good. Councilmember Hood.
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Norr.
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Luke.
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Heim.
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmembers Patel.
I concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Concur and vote aye.
By all eight councilmembers have concurred and voted aye. Councilmember Grimmer.
Move again that bill number sixty-three thirty-eight become ordinance number two-two dash three-four.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Grimmer once again, and seconded by councilmember Patel once again, for bill sixty-three thirty-eight to become ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-four. Any further comments, councilmembers?
Well, yeah.
Need to remove it from the table.
I am pleased to see that we looked over to the design of the car wash and the public hearing and so forth, and I think that, uh, based on our experiences with the previous car wash, the existing car wash here, uh, we sometimes run into, uh, stacking on St. Charles Rock Road. We've looked at that in this term, and I think that there's proper queuing, uh, the site of course, uh, queuing that we should not have those type of issues, that traffic spilling out of the St. Charles Rock Road. So, I'm very pleased to see that design change in there, so therefore, I would support.
Yeah, I need to interrupt you, because I know, Mr. Greggs, you told me that there was a change that took place on this, that after.
Oh, I see.
And after it came out of planning and zoning, and after we first read it, is that correct?
Yes, and pardon me, my oversight, Mr. Greggs did mention to me that, well.
We need to come back now and then.
All right, very well.
I believe you. Is that not correct?
There was a minor revision to the site plan, based on through the discussion at the September seventh public hearing, that was included in the memo and the package you all thought, it was, um, the stacking was still the same, the overall design is still the same, they just added an opening for, I guess, an emergency, I guess. So, there, but yes, correct, there is a revised site plan.
So, I guess I'm going to ask the city attorney, since there was a revision to what we first introduced, and what came out of the public hearing, does that require an amendment as a condition on this?
Well, yes. Um, so, and it, and we're going to have to go back into the administrative process again. So, if there's a new site plan, um, we need to, we're going to have to table again, we're going to have to go back into the administrative process, reconsider the findings and facts and conclusions of law based on the new site plan. So, I think the first thing that we need to do is make sure everybody's clear on what site plan's in, uh, in.
In front of it?
In front of it. All right, thank you.
All right, well, I would, um, I would beg the council to, because Mr. Greggs specifically mentioned that to me, that there was a minor revision of a basic plate, as I recall, to, uh, as the council has probably read, it's a way of, of a person exiting the queue, is they wanted to somehow, for whatever reason, exit the line, a provision was, that the design was modified to allow a person to exit the queue and, and go on. My mistake, I, I, I should have caught that right up front, it was mentioned to me, and I just went right through it, so, you know, bad, my bad.
All right, so, the first thing that, I think, that's the way the council's going to go, the first thing we need to do is move to amend the bill to replace the site plan that was attached to the bill at first reading with the new site.
Okay. Does everybody understand? Councilmember Patel, did you have a question about this?
The, the site plan, yes, it's about, there is a circle on the new plot plan, there was a new opening, so we need to make sure that's the reason why there's.
That's what we're getting ready to use, you're right.
All right, thank you.
All right? So, we're going to backtrack through this, sorry, folks, it'll take us a few minutes just to get through this. So, we need to back to, we already second read, we're now going to come back to amend the original site plan in the bill to add that little escape route.
So, move.
Is that what you want to do, councilmember?
Basically, yes, sir, I would like to offer the amendment as presented, uh, represented with the amendment and the revised site, the site plan, I would like to offer that as a, an amended version of bill number sixty-three thirty-eight. Second.
Okay, councilmember Grimmer has proposed an amendment to bill sixty-three thirty-eight, seconded by councilmember Patel, to amend the site plan by the inclusion of an escape route out of a queue where they line up the cars to go into a car wash. Is that a fair assessment? Everybody understand what we're doing? Any comments, questions?
Tell them straight to me.
Those in favor of the amendment, we're only voting on the amendment right now, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, we got to go back through, councilmember Grimmer, the whole process once again, just like you read, as amended.
Move that, uh, move that the amended bill sixty-three thirty-eight become ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-four.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel, that the amended version of bill sixty-three thirty-eight become ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-four. Councilmember Grimmer.
Yes, so, for the purpose of consideration of this special use permit, move to table bill number sixty-three thirty-eight.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel to table, bill sixty-three thirty-eight. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? The motion carries. Councilmember Grimmer.
Okay, uh, attorney, it's necessary to be able to, very well, here we go again, folks, and again, my apologies. Move that the proposed use set forth in bill number sixty-three thirty-eight be determined to promote the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of people of the city of Bridgeston in accordance with an accomplishment of the comprehensive zoning plan of the state taking into consideration the effect of such building or use on traffic conditions, fire safety, the character of the neighborhood, the general welfare of the community, and utility. Second, please.
Thank you.
Further, finding of fact and conclusion of law, I find that as a fact, the proposed use will have no adverse effect on the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the people of Bridgeston with respect to traffic conditions, fire safety, the character of the neighborhood, and the general welfare of the community or public utility. My vote is aye on the amended version of bill sixty-three thirty-eight.
Very good. Councilmember Hood.
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Norr.
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Luke.
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Heim.
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Concur and vote aye.
All eight councilmembers have concurred and voted aye.
Send council rules and remove bill, the amended bill sixty-three thirty-eight from the table.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, motion by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel, to suspend council rules and bring bill sixty-three thirty-eight back off table. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Councilmember Grimmer.
Again, move that the amended version of bill number sixty-three thirty-eight become ordinance number twenty-two dash three-four.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel for bill sixty-three thirty-eight to become ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-four. I'm guessing you don't have any further comments, do you?
You can repeat this one, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment, question? Saying none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Heim.
Aye.
Councilmember Luke.
Aye.
Councilmember Norr.
Aye.
Councilmember Hood.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
By your vote of eight, nothing, you've approved bill sixty-three thirty-eight to become ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-four. We are down to bill sixty-three thirty-nine. Councilmember Norr.
Yes, thank you. Uh, council, uh, you have received the, uh, new, uh, sixty-three thirty-one.
Ask for the second reading first.
Okay, I'm sorry. Move for second reading of bill number sixty-three thirty-nine. Sorry.
Motion made by councilmember Norr, seconded by councilmember Patel for the second reading of bill sixty-three thirty-nine. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Now, you're going to the third reading of the bill.
Okay, and, council, you have received that the increased, uh, levy, it went from one fifty-four to one fifty, one fifty-eight.
You have to read the bill, councilmember.
All right. More than to the city council, the city of Bridgeston, Missouri, establishing annual rate tax levy for the year twenty twenty-two on all property within the boundaries of the city of Bridgeston, providing for the extension of said property tax on the books of the collector by the county clerk, and authorizing St. Louis County collectors to collect said taxes. Move that bill number sixty-three thirty-nine become ordinance?
Twenty-two dash thirty-five. Motion made by councilmember Norr, seconded by councilmember Hood, that bill sixty-three thirty-nine become ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-five. Now, councilmember Norr, you have an amendment?
Amendment, uh, on this bill is amend, uh, the, the original tax was one point one five four, the new tax rate is one five eight.
Sorry.
Hold on one second here. So, we, we're in section one, where we're talking about the residential real property tax rate, the, the motion is to a point.
Councilmember Heim, seconded by councilmember.
I'm sorry.
You were second. Councilmember Norr is first, seconded by councilmember Heim to amend the bill to go to the, from one point one five four to point one five eight. Is that correct, councilmember Norr?
Yes, that's.
On the residential rate?
Yes, the proposed tax rate received from, uh, from the St. Louis County.
Correct. Further comments or questions on the amendment only? Councilmember Patel.
Um, yes, can maybe, uh, our, our attorney explain the difference here and, and why it came back as a change, just for all the.
First step for.
That's why I'm just kind of curious, I mean, is it, do we have to create it up higher, or can we keep it at the lower rate?
Sir, I'm not, I'm not familiar with.
I'm just wondering. Are those asked you by?
I would, Mr. Bookout, or Minnesota, explain what, what this entails. We got new information from the county, but.
Because the commercial's not changing, so I'm wondering why, just the residential's changing and not the other.
The mayor is exactly right, when we did the first reading at the last council, we didn't have the final numbers from the county. Now, we're receiving the final numbers from the county, these were adjusted slightly. So, if I'm correct, Christine, uh, it went from point one five four, point one five eight on the residential, and then, then the commercial goes from, uh, point two two nine, point two three four. Is that right? Two, three, fours in the bill.
Right, right. It did not change on the commercial side. Councilmember Heim, did you, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, uh, does this require any public hearing then, due to the fact that the numbers presented as the first public hearing changed?
No, in the past, what happens is the county accessories office comes in with information, and they want this by the October, or October meet. So, what we do is we draft up the ordinance, they come in, which we had before you back at the first meeting on the seventh, and then they follow back through, if they get new information coming in from the seventh, then they sent to us a week ago or so.
There's the preliminary number that comes in July, but we have to file the rate, they come in, the proposed DOE rate was to come out in September, but it's been missed until September.
So, these are the new rates that the county sent to us. Good?
Yes, uh, I guess at future public hearings for this, we should use the, uh, word approximately on when we present, how much revenue would be taken in?
On revenue, we, we tried to give a pretty good estimate of what we have.
You're right.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes, I know, the year before I came on council, back two thousand eight, I spoke at the council meeting about this, and said, okay, yes, it's sixteen, it's been sixteen for a long time, and was also, uh, brought to the attention that the council could change it and make it just a penny. So, uh, we're voting right now to raise it to fifteen point eight instead of point, fifteen point four. So, why do we have to change it to that? Can't we leave it at the other number? Otherwise, we're really adding a tax to our citizens, which have just experienced a huge real estate tax increase right now, relatively. I'm just looking at, at, at the numbers on, you know, across the board. We have, the eight of us have the decision to make five votes, to say that we can lower this or raise it, not to sixteen cents. Is that correct, Dave?
You can always go lower than that.
Correct, you're correct. So, we have to vote to change this as a, as a council, to increase our taxes on our citizens, you know, just because of a change recommended by the county, but it doesn't something that we have to do.
You are correct in your assessment.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions?
We'll be voting no on the amendment, thank you.
Well, there is no amendment on the, well, there is the amendment on this, yes. Councilmember Grimmer.
Well, it's, yeah, I, I, I realize it's an increase, uh, but one of the things that, uh, we're fortunate here in Bridgeston, and we have a, another bill that's going to come up, where we're going to be able to spend their, considerate, to extend a considerable amount of money on a repair, uh, and this is, I, I find to be somewhat of an extraordinary event, but the reason we're able to do that is we have a very secure tax base. I don't like paying taxes personally, um, but I also believe that if they're invested in, in a, a city government, uh, that spends them wisely, it's good to make sure that that government has sufficient funds to operate, and that's what we're doing here, I agree. Uh, again, I'm not generally in favor of, of higher taxes, uh, but I think it's a necessity to maintain the services, the level of service, uh, that this community provides. It's not a big increase, uh, but I think it, it will ensure that, uh, we have that ability to respond to situations, uh, such as we're going to respond to one probably tonight, which is this evening. So, uh, I would support the increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? We're only talking about the amendment. So, the amendment once again is the proposed rate ceiling of residential from one, one five four to one five eight. Correct, councilmember Norr?
Yes, correct, sir.
All right. Those in favor of the amendment?
Roll call.
Okay, we will take a roll call on it.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Heim.
Aye.
Councilmember Luke.
Aye.
Councilmember Norr.
Aye.
Councilmember Hood.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you've approved the amendment. We're back to the bill as amended. Councilmember Norris, did you have anything else?
No, sir.
Further comments or questions on the bill as amended? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Hein.
Aye.
Councilmember Luke.
Aye.
Councilmember Norris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hood.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you've approved bill sixty-three thirty-nine to become ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-five. We are down to bill sixty-three forty, again, councilmember North.
Yes, sir. Move for second reading of bill number sixty-three forty.
Second.
Motion is made by councilmember North, seconded by councilmember Hood for the second reading of bill sixty-three forty. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing, motion carries. Councilmember Norris.
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached here to with Allied Services LLC, DBA Republic Services of Bridgeton, Missouri for residential solid weight, yard weight, and recyclable waste collection, removal and disposal for the period of January first, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, in accordance with the unit prices of the bid submitted by Allied Services, DBA Republic Services of Bridgeton, Missouri on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Move that bill number sixty-three forty to become ordinance twenty-two.
Dash thirty-six.
Thirty-six, thank you, sir.
Second.
Motion is made by councilmember Norris, seconded by councilmember Hood for bill sixty-three forty to become ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-six. Comments, questions? We start off, councilmember Norris.
Yes, sir, um, I would like to, uh, have a discussion on the ten-year portion, uh, to extend it on a ten-year contract, the savings we will incur. Um, I don't feel at this time that, that we're going to see any decreases, uh, in equipment, in salaries, in pensions. I said I'd like to, uh, extend this. This company has, this center has, uh, we've done this for nine years. They've been an exceptional, uh, company of services for our residents, and I would like to, uh, amend and extend the contract to twenty thirty-two.
Second.
Okay, so in the form of an amendment, your proposal is to extend the contract for a ten-year agreement with Republic Services, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The attorney advised that there'll be other portions of the ordinance, as well as the contract, we would have to amend. So I guess the question amongst councilmembers is what the feeling is, and I took the first and has the light on is councilmember Grimmer.
Well, this has been a long slog, I guess, through this, and again, but I, I think we finally, uh, uh, have gotten something that, that, that we can move with. I totally agree with the, the comments of councilwoman Norris, that things are not going to change. We're seeing upward pressure on wages, uh, equipment, the leap times, if you can even hit it, or getting, uh, extended all the time. Uh, Republic Services, and every, every resident that I've talked to over the long period have, have agreed that this is very, very good service. I think we're in a position to lock this in at a, at a, at a affordable and predictable, uh, uh, price that we can budget for. Uh, I'm comfortable with the fact that the contract has enough flexibility that if some unforeseen circumstances would, would, uh, uh, cause us to have to reconsider the contract. There are some options, some outs that you could take, uh, to, to void the contract or modify the contract before the ten-year period would go. So all those things considered, uh, I would, I would highly support exercising the ten-year option as proposed.
Very good. Comments from other councils? The reason we're asking for comments is because we'll have to change the amendments, because there are various sections within the ordinance that make reference to the link to the contract and so forth like that. So if we're not, if we are not going to do it, we just soon get it out front right now, and then we'll go back through and have to amend. Those other amendments, they have to be made. If you look through the ordinance on it, the reference is three-year agreement, so that's where it has, those all have to be amended. Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes, I, uh, I can go either way. I'd probably vote for it, um, but it would have been nice to know ahead of time that we were going to try to amend this, you know? I think if a councilperson knows, they should try to get ahold of us and say, hey, here's what we're doing, so we could look at it a little bit closer to make educated decisions. Thank you.
Councilmember Hood.
Mayor, could we, uh, pass this conditionally on both proper corrections?
Pass it conditionally? Uh, no, according to the attorney, he's saying we have to just go through there and just make the other changes. It takes a whole lot of time, but we'll just read the other changes where they'll take place, so that you all know where it's at. It's not going to be all mine.
Oh, huh. That wasn't going to concern the straight.
Okay. Are, are you comfortable with this?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I'm fine with changing to a ten-year term, as long as there's still the language that, uh, we reserve the right, um, to change or cancel the contract at any time.
Okay.
And if we, the only reading through that we have to do is to change the, uh, length of term, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Councilmember Hein.
Oh, yeah, I was just wondering if the city attorney is suggesting that we table it and revisit it the first meeting in October?
No, I, I think it's easy enough to do that.
Okay, I can.
Very good. Councilmember Patel.
Yes, a quick question on that, yeah. Currently, we have a, in front of us, a three plus three, right, option? Does this change to a five plus five to make ten, or is it a ten plus ten?
No, I think it's a ten.
Or just straight, just straight ten?
Ten plus ten, no, I think it's a flat out ten.
It's a flat out ten?
Yeah, I mean, if ten with three one-year renewals is what I've.
Is that?
If all we're doing is changing the initial term to ten years instead of three, it would be ten years with three one-year renewals.
Okay, that, I was wanting your input on that. All right, that's fine. I, I, I support the ten years because I think they've done outstanding job.
Just clarification, council would have to approve the renewals.
Correct.
It's just not automatic.
It's ten, but we, they have the option, we all have the option, both sides, to, to renew it then for just additional single years after that. Thank you.
Right. Councilmember Norris?
Yes, sir.
Did you have a question?
Oh, I just was wondering, I didn't know if we wanted this to spend council really and have, uh, the representatives republic make a pres, anything, but I guess that's not, unless there's any questions from council.
I didn't hear any.
Okay, all right.
Very good.
Okay.
I need, I should probably clarify with public work, on the ten-year alternate, is that how it would let forbid a ten-year initial term with three one-year renewals? Or how did you let it forbid?
No, we chose ten-year.
With no renewal?
Right.
Okay, then that's.
So it's a flat ten years.
Okay, that's good.
Then that's more change.
Councilmember Patel, you okay with this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Unchose the ten years.
Okay. So now we need to go back to councilmember Norris on your amendment. Would you be willing to amend, and then we'll have the city attorney re, as the council, we're all, we're going to amend this bill?
Yes, sir, uh.
So you want to rescind your original amendment, and then we'll just redo it?
I can do that.
Okay. We're seconded, we're seconded from councilmember Hood, because I believe you were on the second.
All right.
All right? So we were sending the first amendment, now your amendment. Councilwoman Norris.
So I can offer a proposed motion.
Do you want the city attorney to read it for you?
That would be fine.
Okay.
It's not as simple as just putting in a new date.
I wish it were.
All right, I'm so sorry.
The, um, okay, so the, I think what I understand the motion to be, that you'd make the following changes in the caption to the bill, uh, where it says, from January one, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six, that would be changed to twenty thirty-two. At the end of the caption, I would, uh, recommend putting in, with the acceptance of the ten-year alternate, and Karen, I'll get you all.
Thank you.
Then, down in the body of the bill, in section one, where it says, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached here to, I would add a parenthetical, with such additional adjustments as are necessary to reflect a ten-year initial term with no renewal terms, close current. And then again, change the date from twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-two. Then, in the, uh, contract that's attached, section two, the reference from, uh, December thirty-one to twenty twenty-five would be changed to December thirty-one, twenty thirty-two. The following sentence regarding the renewal term would be deleted. And then the reason I added that parenthetical, now that we're taking out renewal terms too, I'll have to go through and clean out all the references to renewal terms. Section five, on performance bond, the, uh, the contract amount shall be the bidder's base bid proposal for the period of time from January one, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-one, twenty thirty-two. Um, and I think that, with that parenthetical that we added, I think that should be sufficient.
So moved?
I don't want to mistake what he said.
I think someone needs to make that move.
I think, councilwoman Norris, is that your motion?
Yes, it's my motion, sir.
Second.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Seconded by councilmember Patel, so everybody follows what we've done? All right. Voting only on the amendment. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Standing, motion carries. Now we're back to bill sixty-three forty as amended for final reading. Councilman Norris? Move for third reading.
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached here to with Allied Services LLC, DBA Republic Services of Bridgeton, Missouri for residential solid weight, yard weight, and recyclable waste collection, removal and disposal for the period of January first, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty thirty-two, in accordance with the unit prices of the bid submitted by Allied Services LLC, DBA Republic Services of Bridgeton, Missouri on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion is made by councilmember Norris, seconded by councilmember Hood for bill sixty-three forty to become ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-six. Further comments, councilmember Norris?
No, sir, I think this is going to give a, a future, uh, we won't, uh, have to, uh, discuss this for a while, so we will give our residents the company that they have requested and, uh, and I'm very pleased about this.
Very good. Further comments, councilmember Luke?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Did I hear the attorney say that in addition, the end of that would say, with the acceptance of the ten-year alternate?
He did, uh, Ms. Luke, we really didn't need that third reading of the caption anyway, so I was just going to let go. All we needed to do was put it in ordinance form. Thank you, though, you're right.
Further comments or questions from council? Seeing and hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Luke.
Aye.
Councilmember Norris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hood.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Hein.
Aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you've approved bill sixty-three forty to become ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-six. Consideration of new bills, we're down to bill sixty-three forty-one, councilmember Grimmer.
Thank you, mayor. Move for first reading of bill number six three four one.
Second.
Motion is made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel for the first reading of bill sixty-three forty-one. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Standing, motion carries. Councilmember Grimmer.
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached here to with Gerson Construction Company, Inc., for the Welland Avenue Rear Yard Drainage Improvement Project in the amount of three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars with a ten percent contingency in the amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
All right, move to. Wait a minute, you, you want to second read it, right?
Yeah, right. Move to suspend council rule for the purpose of a second reading.
Now you say second. Motion is made and seconded, motion made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel for suspend council rule, so authorized second reading of bill sixty-three forty-one. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Standing, motion carries. Now we're back to you.
All right, move for second reading of bill number six three four one.
Second.
Motion is made by, by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel for the second reading of bill sixty-three forty-one. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Standing, motion carries. Councilmember Grimmer.
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached here to with Gerson Construction Company, Inc., for the Welland Ave, Avenue, Rear Yard Drainage Improvement Project in the amount of three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars with a ten percent contingency in the amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
So you have moved to become ordinance. You want that to become bill number?
Well, all right. First of all, I would like to offer a.
No, you get an ordinance first, or? Yeah, we have to do an ordinance, okay? So you want to change bill sixty-three forty-one to become ordinance point two dash thirty-seven.
All right.
Say it.
Two dash thirty-seven.
Now you can say seven. All right. Motion is made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel for bill sixty-three forty-one to become ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-seven. Now we're back to you, councilmember Grimmer.
Okay, I would like to, um, just make sure council understands that the amount of three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars is based on the base bid of two ninety-five, which would allow forty-five working days. However, the bid we approve, or we propose to approve here is to be completed in thirty working days. And the reason for that is that we're looking at a weather window opportunity, plus the fact that a lot of this construction work involves the laying of sod, and the earlier that sod gets down and has time to root, the better successes for this project, since we're spending this kind of money. Uh, on this also providing, uh, the extra funds of forty thousand dollars also offers an incentive for the contractor to get in there and, and get this job done and prepare. So all things considered, uh, so forty thousand dollars extra over the base bid, I think, is a wise spending of council funds. Thank you.
Okay, before we move on, I'll ask city, the city attorney, since this is the alternate on it, and we are proposing to go with the alternate, does that require it to amend?
Yes.
Okay. So it's going to require an amendment? That's why I asked, correct? Uh, you didn't pass it, did you? Right. All we did was we second read it, and then you brought it up for final reading. This is when you amend, and that's what I'm saying, right now is when you would amend, because you want to take the alternate to the three hundred thirty-five thousand.
So if that's the case, if the council, if the amendment would be, and here again, we're looking now at the contract that's attached to the bill, uh, we would be making amendment in article three, where it references that the work, uh, should be completed within forty-five working days. That would be changed to thirty calendar days. I believe it's calendar days, not working days. I believe it's calendar days, not working days.
behind it is because we are entering the period of the year when grass may only not grow, Calendar days, yeah, calendar days. so you want to expedite that, or at least that's why you have an alternate till you
And then, in section, or sorry, article, uh, twelve, the last sentence, contractor
get it down. You follow?
I do. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the contractor's bid stating that they can complete this in thirty calendar
shall complete all work within forty-five working days from the notice to proceed, would
days.
If he signs this contract, he has thirty days to complete.
change to thirty calendar days.
He, he says he can do that.
Those are the two changes to the contract.
Yes, he does.
And when would he start?
He would start upon the notice to proceed, which is what, ten to fifteen days after
So, the amendment would be to amend the attached contract as stated.
I sign the contract, and ten days, because they have to get their insurance warrants Is that your motion, Councilmember?
That would be my motion.
into us and the bond.
Second.
Sometimes that takes a little bit of time, but they have to carry liability insurance
That's exactly what I was, I'm sure you were.
for the grid protected as well as them.
So, do we have enough time for sod to take root?
According to a landscape contractor that I know, yes, it can still take root. The only problem would be is if we have a hard breeze, like, you know, early, early, and that's not hopefully likely to happen.
Who is responsible for watering the sod to make sure it grows?
Initially, that's the contractor, until such time as when that contractor picks up sod, and if it doesn't come up like he picks it up, that means it's taken root. And then there's also a period of time, it's one year, that we require them to?
If he hasn't any contract, that he has to come out and do all the maintenance, anything that's around, um, next spring, he needs to be replaced.
All right?
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions on the amendment? Seeing none, those in favor of the amendment only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. Motion carries. The bill is amended. Now we're back to you, Councilmember Norris, on the original bill sixty-three forty-one as amended to become ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-seven.
Grimmer.
Sorry, sorry. Grimmer, I'm getting them all confused tonight, sorry about that.
Uh, move that bill number sixty-three forty-one become ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-seven. Amended ordinance number sixty-three forty-one become ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-seven.
Second. Councilmember Grimmer has made a motion to the bill, amended bill sixty-three forty-one to become ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-seven. Further comments, Councilmember?
No, sir, I'm glad that we were able to do this. I think the logic of, you know, spending the extra forty thousand dollars to ensure that, uh, this project is successfully done, I'm happy, uh, happy to get that done, and I'm glad that the rest of the council agrees.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes, aye too, I'm glad that we're hopefully moving this forward. Uh, however, I have some questions, I'm, I'm gonna vote for this, but, uh, two years ago I brought this up because I was brought to attention by the Lepias about this, and I said, well, they're still under construction, and they have a bond provided to the City of Bridgeton. Were we able to collect any of this on their bond, or did they just help them release the bond? Because supposedly this is something that's supposed to be covered if they don't do the grading and drainage correctly. I brought that up a couple of years ago.
Mr. Gunn, do you have a response?
The Bridgeton contract, everything according to this plan.
That's not the question. The question, there's a bond, it was up here, it covers it, it's supposed to pass everything for drainage and MSD approvals and, and their inspections, but it looks like this didn't happen, and now we're getting ready to spend quite a bit of money, you know, on that, you know, not unnecessarily, but, yeah, out of something that, that developer and builder should have had, had to do at the beginning with, on, on the plans that were submitted to MSD or, and the City of Bridgeton, with their bond that would have been provided that would have covered this.
I'm not sure the MSD would be involved with it. If you recall back when this first occurred?
Yes.
We then adopted a new ordinance for the City of Bridgeton with regards to disturbing soil, so if you disturb more than a hundred square feet, Robert?
Right.
If you disturb a hundred square feet or more, it has to be sod, not seed. The project on this particular case was allowed because the requirements stated he could seed the area as long as he saw it and then tried to water. Is that correct statement?
Yes.
He tried, so he lived up to that portion of his agreement.
Okay, we saw the problem before they closed every house.
Yeah, we're not gonna be able to get the bond.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Norris?
Yes, I, I just want to make a comment, I'm, I'm very much, uh, just gonna fight breaking, you know, that Mother Nature really, uh, uh, can do a lot of harm. Uh, we have seen the exceptions on many things with, uh, where people have never flooded the floor, never had a problem, they've been in a home for forty years, and, you know, so, uh, I don't know, uh, if the contractor, uh, you know, the small contractor, uh, has any, uh, problems with it, but, uh, we do have to settle this, and of course, if we, if, you know, water goes downhill, this could get worse for the people, uh, going down the hill, and, uh, I know it is quite an expensive project, but our residents, uh, they're crying for help, and, uh, we do need to be sensitive, this is their biggest investment, it's their homes, um, and so I'd like to get this project start, you know, started as quickly as possible. Um, again, I will be voting for this, thank you.
Councilor Ahn?
Uh, just a comment, going forward, I think the city needs to be more involved on any, uh, new residential or commercial developments pertaining to their, their drainage, uh, issues. Uh, we need to be involved, uh, in right there with the MSD, I think, to make sure, uh, that these are taken care of and we don't get into a mess again. Thank you.
Councilmember Luke?
Thank you. Um, I just want to follow up on, on the bottom, it says alternate A is three thirty-five with the thirty calendar day notice, and then after that it says, if City Council choose to move forward, Public Works will request a ten percent contingency in the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred, which brings the total up to three sixty-eight five hundred. Um, so the actual amount of this project is not going to be three thirty-five, it's going to be three sixty-eight five hundred.
The contingencies would only be noted if there's unforeseen circumstances that occur on the job, that a contractor then comes in and he knows that their city will fund it up to that point for sure.
Okay. So we're planning on three thirty-five, but we have a pushin' up to three sixty-eight.
Exactly.
So that's actually what we're voting on.
Right. Further comments or questions? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hein?
Aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you've approved bill sixty-three forty-one to become ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-seven. For your order to bill sixty-three forty-two, Councilmember Norris?
Yes, thank you. Move for first reading of bill number sixty-three forty-two.
Second. Motion's made by Councilmember Norris, seconded by Councilmember Hood for the first reading of bill sixty-three forty-two. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Standing. Motion carries. Councilmember Norris?
In order to the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a service agreement order from substantially in the form attached here to between the City of Bridgeton and Block Group Incorporated, wherein Block Group Incorporated agrees to install additional cameras for the existing automatic license plate detection system and related software and hardware services in connection therewith. Move to table.
Second. Motion's made by Councilmember Norris, seconded by Councilmember Hood for table, bill sixty-three forty-two. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing. Motion carries. That bill is tabled. We have no discussion items for the night, we're down to the attorney's report.
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Council communications, we'll start out with Councilmember Zimmer.
Just one thing, glad to be back in Bridgeton this week. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes, uh, I wanted to thank some of our street department crew, uh, last week, it seemed like Arbor, not Arbor Gardens, but down past, that's the subdivision there, uh, Fort McKay was, uh, cleaning out their retention bond, dump trucks going up and down P P Road, and I observed, uh, one of the dump trucks, uh, dumping a whole lot of mud, they went northbound on P P Road, all the way from West Navin to Steak and Shake, and, uh, after calling the city hall and talking to, uh, CJ and a couple others, uh, a guy named Matt come out and looked at it, said, yeah, we need to get the skid loader out here right away and take care of that, so, uh, that's, I'm glad about the street department and jumping right to that. My, my, my question comes back as far as, okay, is that the development responsibility to take care of that, and is there a way that we can turn around and bill them back for that? They were still even today, still hauling more mud out of that same retention pond going down there, so, I just wanted to question on how that's coming along.
We'll have him address that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Patel?
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
You, Councilmember Grimmer?
Yes, uh, just want to announce something, uh, I will miss the October five meeting, uh, I tried to schedule my vacation time around council meetings, but you guys keep moving them, and Mother Nature keeps having hurricanes and all this other kind of stuff, so, have to miss a meeting, sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hein?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to thank the city for the, uh, valuable experience I received at the, uh, Missouri Municipal League Conference a couple weeks ago. I always look at it as a, uh, learning experience. Uh, one thing I came back to, um, report was that, uh, the guest speaker spoke about city's core values, and I think we need to probably get something in writing of what are four or five core values of Bridgeton, or, um, this maybe could be a test through our comprehensive plan, which should be updated, or a five-year plan. Um, I attended the part of the kickoff game, uh, a couple Fridays ago, it was very entertaining, and, again, if they do it, again, next year, I'd like, uh, council and maybe some from, uh, administration to get together and put together our own little team, see how we do. I attended the Bridgeton Wish Walk, but, which I believe was very successful, and I'm sure, uh, somebody else will comment on that. Uh, coming up on Sunday, which is the second, four threes having a picnic up at Gentry Park, uh, we are inviting the whole city, so please come out, they have a flyer, if you like one, before you leave. It will be from three to seven P M. We are not providing any food or beverages, however, we are providing entertainment for the four, four hours, full four hours. Uh, Anita Roserman, along with David Green, and Lou Weiner, who plays saxophone, so, uh, they're very entertaining. Um, like I said before, I think the city needs to be more involved on any drainage plans for future residential and commercial developments. I believe that's all I have right now, thank you.
Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Special Events Commission met this week to start the planning for next year's parade, and they have chosen music Through the Decades as the theme, so we're always looking for ways to make the parade entertaining and fun to, to watch and participate in, and having a bunch of music is gonna be a really good addition. Um, Mr. Gunn, when it's, when you have an opportunity, maybe you can address a couple of things. A resident asked me about if there's anything we can do about the trees on the National Guard property, or anyone we can call to have those taken care of, especially the ones that break and look bad. And then also the ramp from St. Charles Rock Road onto Seventy Eastbound is slick during the rain, and he said he's witnessed multiple accidents there. I don't know if MODOT is aware, I'm, I'm sure our police are, because they would have to respond to them. Um, if someone can address, if there's anything we can do, uh, to help those.
What was it that slipped right where?
St. Charles Rock Road to Seventy Eastbound by Telly Tire.
That it?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Norris?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I attended the Make-A-Wish, uh, also on September seventeenth, it was a great day. Um, I believe they, they, well, I can't, I can't even tell you the total, I think it was sixteen thousand dollars, which was a great event. Um, I had an opportunity, which made my day, uh, to, uh, Don Cate, he was a very good sport, uh, so, uh, that was a fun day for everyone, and, uh, I mean, I know, uh, it, it was a great, um, event, uh, in donation to the Make-A-Wish program, but I would love to have that going on, maybe just for a city, uh, party, that would be a great, uh, a lot of people came out. It was a walk also, I'm sorry, not besides just the dumping, so, uh, but, uh, anyway, it was a great day. And then later that day, I attended the Boston Farm Block Party, uh, I loved seeing the neighbors, a great, great crowd. Uh, Pat Gilfry and Barton came out, gave a presentation, uh, around, about their truck equipment and what they used, residents certainly enjoyed the information. We also had a snow cone, uh, there was other council people, uh, uh, Don was there, and the mayor had came too, so, it was a great day to see our neighbors. Um, also, Robert, it's for you, Robert, you're getting hit tonight, buddy, sorry. Uh, Green Ranch, uh, I believe that's where the American Water, uh, I think they just, I was in town, they tore up the street yesterday, I just was wondering if you had a timeline on one net, because they just tore it up and the concrete was all just piled up in a pile. Um, and I am sorry, I'm missing the commission dinner tomorrow, I do have a conflict in my schedule, so that's also, uh, but you all have a great time. And, um, I'm, I'm really pleased that we were able to get this trash contract, uh, uh, the residents, of course, the service from Republic, um, they're very pleased. And, um, Mayor, do you have any dates in regarding some of the decisions with the charter that we will be, and also the budget meeting, if you could start thinking about that, um, dates should be great for, um, if we can get some advance notice.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Councilmember Hood?
I'm good.
All right, Mr. Gunn, you had a couple of questions, that were thrown at you.
All right, motor on the street, we've been working with the contractor, I know it's been trying to get the detention basis fixed before bad weather hits. Um, granted, the dump truck driver made a mistake, and they're very, um, appreciative of the ability for the Public Works squad to help them, and they're gonna strive to do better next time. Accidents happen, they did recommend thrivers, so just gonna forge it on, and maybe get that detention basis done in the near future. Um, the trees on the National Guard property, I did have a meeting down in Jeff City, uh, two weeks ago, I meant the action in general of the National Guard, um, we talked about the condition of the building, um, we're gonna do a little horse trade, we're gonna have some issues with the filthy, so we're gonna have some old plans on the man now, um, if we could work on using those two trees, take it down, it's gonna be up here in November, do a site visit, and we're gonna meet greet with everyone, um, at the buildings, I would imagine with him coming up here, uh, somebody will be taking those trees down to the building as soon as the accident gets here. Uh, the slip list for the ranch, I will email my contact over at MODOT, and on Green Ranch, I'm glad to see they're starting, they go through repairs, it's the water company's contractor, the fact that they've already had to excavate it out, I would imagine the contract will be in very, very soon, probably just a couple days.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Robert, to report on?
No, I'm good.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I attended the Make-A-Wish also on September seventeenth. It was a great day. I believe they, they, well, I can't even just tell you the total, I think it was sixteen thousand dollars, which was a great event. I had an opportunity, which made my day, to dump the chief. He was a very good sport, so that was a fun day for everyone. And, I mean, I know it was a great event in homage to the Make-A-Wish program, but I would love to have that going on, maybe just for a city party. That would be a great, if a lot of people came out. It was a walk also, I'm sorry, not precisely just the dumping, so, but anyway, it was a great day. And then later that day I attended the Boston Farm Block Party. I loved seeing the neighbors, a great, great crowd. Pat Hill Carter Barton came out, gave a presentation around about their truck equipment and what they used. Residents certainly enjoyed the information. We also had a snow cone, there was other council people, Don was there and the mayor had came too. So it was a great day to see our neighbors. Um, also, Robert, it's for you, Robert, you're getting hit tonight, buddy. Sorry. Green Ranch, I believe that's where the American Water, I think they just, I was at home, they tore up the street yesterday. I just was wondering if you had a timeline on when that, because they just tore it up and the concrete is all just piled up in a pile. And I am sorry, I'm missing the commission dinner tomorrow. I do have a conflict in my schedule, so that also, but you all have a great time. And, um, I'm really pleased that we were able to get this trash contract. The residents, of course, serve us from the public, they're very pleased. And, um, Mayor, do you have any dates in regarding some of the decisions with the charter that we will be and also the budget meeting? If you could start thinking about that, dates should be great for, if we can get some advance notice.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Councilmember Hood.
I'm good.
All right, Mr. Gunn, you had a couple of questions that were thrown at you.
All right. We've been working with the contractor, I know it's been trying to get the detention basis fixed before bad weather hits. Granted, the dump truck crowd made a mistake and they're very appreciative of the ability for the Public Works squad to help them and they're going to strive to do better next time. Accidents happen, they did recommend thrivers, so I'm just going to forge on and maybe get that detention basis done in the near future.
Yeah.
The trees on the National Guard property, I did have a meeting down in Jeff City two weeks ago, I met the Action General National Guard. We talked about the condition of the building, they're going to do a little first trade, they're having some issues with the building, so we have some old plans on the man now. We're going to work on using those two trees taken down. It's going to be up here in November, do a site visit and kind of meet greet with everyone at the buildings. I would imagine with him coming up here, somebody will be taking those trees down for the building as soon as he gets here. The ramp, I will email my contact over at MODOT and on Green Ranch, I'm glad to see they're starting the repairs. As the water company's contractor, the fact that they've already had to excavate it out, I would imagine the concrete will be in very, very soon, probably just a couple of days.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Robert, to report on?
Nope, I'm good.
So I think we did finish up our emergency work on Pruitt Farm Road so that it's back open?
Correct. We have a meeting tomorrow, FEMA, we have a conversation with them today for about two hours, maybe a couple hours tomorrow.
Very good.
If somebody wants to sit in and take my place, I'd really appreciate it.
No, that's all right. Mr. Kane on Parks.
Just a quick update on the parks repairs. I'm at the Telewish Park in Matthews Park. I hope to have the request for a little hose at the end of this week. It's been open to the, the October opening number and I hope to have a year approval before the council, if I'm telling you the number, and then be able to throw it there after.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Yeah, I just, it's got on this, you have more? I'll wait till you're done, Brennan. I had a question on Matthews Park, on the playground equipment, when it was going to be replaced, but I didn't respond, but I, I thought we just replaced off that. Could you, could you clue me in on that, where we're at or what, what, you know, what I should respond to with that?
The little park grant that we applied for last year for Matthews Park, Phase Two, which was going to be involved in playground equipment, certain things, the long foot out, the trail and, you know, the rest of the parks and stuff like that. We were not awarded that grant, but we did not do the playground equipment. If rain come up, we'll be applying for this year. It's a very early age, you can change course to deterioration there. So the plan is after this grant to apply again for that in Phase Two.
So how old is the existing playground equipment? Is it pretty old or?
Yeah, I'd say old, thirty years old. It feels bad, can't find, we got to kind of retrofit pieces.
So my, my answer would be probably, um, maybe two years from now. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's in the works, two years from now.
Yep. It'll be a seven-year grant.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Very good. Captain Fitzgerald is with us tonight. Chief is preoccupied. Welcome, Denny.
Thank you, Mayor. The chief and Captain Woodner, they're Angel Pass, New Street, and I've nothing else to report from the police department. Fairly qualified me.
What we like to hear. Mr. Bookout, do you have anything?
There was mention about the question being, I know staff was very discussing that on the plan to get with the mayor right away, and it's almost today, or mayor, if you guys want to talk about that now, we can look at it two days, maybe later.
Why don't we send out a survey to council members? We'll email it to them. And on my report, I will also include in there when you, when the council wants to start deliberations about the charter changes. You recall even the charter commission has stated, maybe pushed this forward a little bit because they knew we had budget coming up as well, and it's why both of them coming together. Because we do, if we're going to put the charter changes on the ballot, they have to be done by, I believe, the third week of January. Third week of January. So we will look at doing that. Councilmember Patel.
Yeah, I propose that we, if you have charter stuff, we do it like an hour, hour and a half before our normal council meetings and make it just on that topic, not create a separate night for it, if that's possible.
Yeah, if the council refines or something like that, we can do it.
We're already headed to direction, getting ready and stuff like that and obviously it's open to the public because it's a sheriff meeting, so.
You know, any other meetings are always open to the public. All right, I have nothing else. You got a motion for adjournment?
Motion adjourned.
Motion made. Councilmember Hines, seconded by Councilmember Grimmer, to adjourn. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We adjourn.